I now call the East Line Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of October 19th, 2023 to order at 7:30 PM. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance is with the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, representative and just as for all.
It's good to have everybody here tonight. I have one kind of sad news for the zoning committee. Our Secretary Terry Granata did resign. I got the letter last night. He's been a really great asset for zoning and I think we're all going to miss him. He just felt like he didn't have the time in his personal life to devote to it right now. So, we will be adding to the agenda in an upcoming meeting to vote on a replacement. He did have two years left in his term. So, tonight, I believe it's Ms. Markovitz's term. If you wouldn't mind sitting tonight, that'd be awesome. So, I'm here. Ms. Jett Harris?
Here.
Mr. Peck?
Yeah.
Mr. Manning?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Ginsburg? And Ms. Markovitz is here. Mr. Peterson? Mr. Mahaln here.
Here.
Ms. LaRocque? And our Ex officio, Ms. Hardy. Great. So, we'll get going here. The first thing we have, of course, are public delegations. It's the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the Commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. However, that's with the exception of a couple hearings we have coming up. The first one is the application of William R. Sweeney, Esquire Agent for Jasmina and Frank Paradise LLC, for the proposed text amendment to Sections 12.1, 1A, and 20.20.9 of the East Line Zoning Regulations. Mr. Mahaln, did you run the legal ad?
Yes.
Okay. First, let's read Mr. Mahaln's memo.
Memo to East Line Zoning Commission from William Mahaln, zoning official. Proposed zoning regulation text amendment Sections 12.1, 1A, and 20.20.9, date October 18th, 2023. The applicant, William R. Sweeney, has proposed a text amendment to the zoning regulations which, if approved, would allow alcoholic beverages to be served in special use zoning districts. SU zones are floating zones that can be approved by the Zoning Commission provided they can conform to the provisions found in Section 12 of the zoning regulations. The process would require a zone change application to rezone a property or properties from the underlying zone to a SU zoning district. Special use zones are primarily regulated under the criteria found in the noted section. This section allows numerous unique uses such as commercial, recreational, recreation complex, or resort area, including restaurants, dance halls, scientific labs, multifamily housing, campgrounds, and many other uses. Examples of existing SU districts in East Line are the KOA campground facility on Route 156, Aces High RV Park on Chesterfield Road, the AHIPA housing on Roxbury Road, and the Chapman Farms Senior Housing on Pennsylvania Avenue. Future proposals for a zone change to an SU zone would require application to the Commission for the change and a special permit for use. This proposal would add a new section to Section 12. This section would be identified as 12.1, 1A, and would state, "12.1, 1A, commercial recreation complex, resort area, including restaurants and cafes with and without the sale of alcoholic liquors or alcoholic beverages. Dance halls, bowling alleys, theaters, billiard and pool parlors, picnic areas, swimming pools, motels, hotels, tourist cabin establishments, and similar places of public recreation and accommodation operated as a business." The language would allow the sale of alcoholic beverages in a cafe setting such as a facility, in my view would essentially be identified as a bar. This amendment would allow such a use in any of the SU zones. However, in my opinion, it would require an amendment to any existing special permits for such developments if we received such a request. In addition, at question is whether a commercial facility, bar, serving alcohol, and an SU zone would be open to the public or to a campground resident only. Further, it is proposed to amend Section 20 of the zoning regulations. This section contains criteria for the regulation of alcohol in East Line. The applicant is proposing to add a new section, 20.20.9, to specifically allow the serving of alcohol in a commercial recreation complex or resort. The specific language states, "20.20.9. Notwithstanding the foregoing provision, it is hereby expressly provided that any restaurant or cafe which is part of a commercial complex or resort area may apply for and operate under a restaurant permit or cafe for the sale of alcoholic liquors or alcoholic beverages." As written, this section would eliminate all the existing alcoholic liquor outlet regulations found in Section 20. In conclusion, the Commission should carefully evaluate the potential adverse impacts of the proposal and whether allowing alcohol to be served in a commercial manner in SU zones is appropriate in our community.
Thank you. And now we have a memo from deep.
Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, East Line Zoning Commission, care of William Mahaln, zoning official, PO Box, drawer 519, Nyiennet, Connecticut, 06357, dated September 26, 2023. Subject, Connecticut, Deep LWRD comments on proposed zoning amendments to Sections 12 and 20 regarding adding cafe with or without sale of alcoholic liquor. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resources Division, that's the LWRD, of the proposed text amendment noted above, received by mail on September 20th, 2023. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text amendments for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act Sections 22A-90 through 22A-112 inclusive, and finds them generally consistent. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in CGS Section 22A-104E, which requires that any zoning regulations or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of CGS Section 22A-92 and the Criteria Subsection B of Section 22A-102 of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposal's consistency with the policies of Section 22A-92 and the Criteria of Section 22A-102B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this letter or any other coastal management matter, please feel free to contact me via email, marcy.balent@ct.gov. Sincerely, Marcy Balent, Marcy Balent, Senior Coastal Planner, Land and Water Resources Division, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, 79 Elm Street, Hartford, Connecticut, 06106-5127.
That's good. Now we have a memo from our Planning Commission.
October 17th, 2023, Antherlo Chairwoman, East Line Zoning Commission, Town of East Line, PO Box 519, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyiennet, Connecticut, 06357. Zoning referral, CGS 8-3A, application of William Sweeney, Esquire Agent for Jasmina and Frank Paradise LLC, to amend Sections 12.1, 1A, and 20.20.9 of the zoning regulations to permit the sale of alcoholic liquor or alcoholic beverages and any commercial recreational complex or resort area, including restaurants and cafes. Chairwoman Thurlow, the East Line Planning Commission, at its meeting of October 10th, 2023, found the above referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 East Line Plan of Conservation and Development. In addition, the Planning Commission noted the Commission may want some additional provisions similar to Section 20.20 in order to provide consistency between the proposed regulation and existing zoning regulations, i.e. the distance required to sell alcoholic beverages from a religious institution or school. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or the POCD, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary Gashell, at 860-691-4105. Sincerely, Kurt Scott, Secretary, Planning Commission.
And one more memo from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments.
William Mahaln, zoning official, Town of East Line, Zoning Department, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyiennet, Connecticut, 06357. Dear Mr. Mahaln, I am writing a response to an application for the regulation amendments for the Town of East Line. The application was received on 9/18/2023. The application was referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed amendments include changes to Sections 12.1, 1A, and 20.20.9 regarding the special use SU zone. The proposed amendments would permit restaurants or cafes within a commercial recreation complex or resort area to apply for state permits for alcohol sales. Based on a review of the material provided, I have determined that the proposed amendments are not likely to be negative inter-municipal impact. I'm going to reread that. Amendments are not likely to have a negative inter-municipal impact. If you have any questions, please call me at 860-889-2324. Sincerely, Nicole Haggerty, Planner 2.
Thank you. Great job. I believe Attorney Sweeney is here tonight to give a presentation.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Commission. My name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm of Tobin Carberry over in London, Connecticut. Thank you for having me here tonight. I appear before you on behalf of Jasmina and Frank Paradise LLC, which is the owner of the Aces High RV Park on Chesterfield Road here in East Line. Joining me tonight are Danielle Jurdi and Chris Taylor, who operate the park on a day-to-day basis. As you're aware, and as you've read about in the memos this evening, my client has submitted a zoning regulation text amendment back in June to seek to modify Section 12.1, 1A, and then add the new Section 20.20.9 to your zoning regulations, which from our perspective really clarify the ability to establish both restaurants and cafes with and without liquor service as uses within commercial recreation complex and resort areas in your SU zone. I remind the Commission that a zoning text regulation amendment is not directly associated with a specific project at a specific location, but it's what we call one of general applicability. It applies to all SU zones here in the community. In other words, tonight's hearing is solely focused on whether restaurants and cafes with and without liquor service should be allowed as part of a commercial recreation complex or resorts in that SU zone. If the amendment is adopted, my client would, in the future, as Mr. Mahaln indicated, have to come back to this Commission and seek a special permit to add a restaurant or cafe with or without liquor service as a separate application, and that would have to happen only if this is adopted. For those of you who are familiar with my client's property, you are aware that the Aces High RV Park is an award-winning camping resort. It's located on about 94 acres of land at 301 Chesterfield Road. We've won a number of awards in the past. Just yesterday, we were notified by ARBC, which is the National RV Park Association, that Aces High is a finalist of Park of the Year, and that's a national award. So, they're in the finals now. So, to give you an idea of the quality of my client's operations, the site is located, as I've said, in an SU zone. It's one of just a few SU zones in the town. I think Mr. Mahaln did a good job of pointing out the other zones and what's in those other zones. And this site in particular has a long history of campground, resort use. There are over 80 campsites at the park. It's supported by a variety of amenities and facilities, a fishing pond, a beach, a swimming pool, a play area, there's a very nice camp store, and a beautiful outdoor pavilion if you've had a chance to visit. You know that the campground is impeccably maintained, and it's really become a premier resort in the region. Why are we here tonight, though? Recreational vehicle camping is a booming industry. It's a growing national pastime. RV parks throughout the country are upgrading their facilities to provide more diverse and upscale amenities. Years ago, I understand that there was a restaurant at this campground, and my clients would eventually like to bring food service back to their campground to support their guests, their residents during their stays. My client's concept that they want to move forward with, and they've met with Mr. Mahaln, is to add a small snack bar café to the site, ideally next to the outdoor pavilion, where campers, camping residents, could buy food, hamburgers, hot dogs, french fries, maybe some a little bit more refined fare as well. We've talked about maybe doing some food-to-table offerings from local farms and local providers, but also where they could get a beer or a glass of wine, or maybe even a cocktail, while they're staying at the park. The plan would be to have the snack bar open during certain hours of the day and allow campers to order at the snack bar, and then actually ideally sit in the pavilion, which is beautiful. It's got seating right now. It's all open air. This would not be a late-night venue. It's not a late-night bar. My clients anticipate operating it only seasonally, and perhaps only certain days of the week. And certainly, the snack bar would close much earlier than typical bars would. We're looking at maybe nine or 10 o'clock, depending on the day. If successful, if this is successful at the campground as a long-term plan, my client's also interested in creating a more traditional sit-down restaurant at the site, but they'd like to really start with this less intensive concept first and see how that goes. As some of you know, the state requires full sit-down meals to be served to be eligible for a full restaurant liquor permit. And so, the word café is being inserted into the regulation because that is the next level down of liquor permit. Cafes aren't our bars, but you must serve food as well. That's Connecticut law, and that would be our intent as well. And we'd like to try to have that less formalized food option to begin with. As Mr. Mahaln pointed out, Section 12, 1A of your zoning regulations already allows commercial recreation complexes and resort areas with restaurants as ancillary by special permit. Arguably, and we did meet with Mr. Mahaln, the definition of standard restaurant in your regulations is pretty expansive, and it might even cover the snack bar today without any text amendment. But after meeting with Mr. Mahaln, he felt it was preferable for us to come before you and obtain this clarifying text amendment to make sure that both restaurants and cafes, regardless of which liquor permit they're operating under, with or without liquor service, are allowed as part of a commercial recreation complex or resort. We've also added the Section 20.20.9, and that's to ensure that restaurants and cafes with liquor service approved under Section 12 don't run afoul of separation requirements. And if you read Section 20.20 specifically, there's a variety of different types of liquor uses that start with notwithstanding the above provisions. It basically allows those in certain areas, so we're just adding a different allowance for these types of uses. We would submit to you that modern campground resorts throughout the country do offer food and beverage service. This is one of the more desirable amenities. We want to have it as available at the Aces High RV Park, and it's really important for them to remain competitive. As this industry and this pastime really grows throughout the country, they want to be able to offer the same types of amenities that other similar situated businesses do. I think most importantly, though, I want to remind you that any restaurants or cafes that are proposed under this amendment are still subject to special permit review. So, we still have to come back to this Commission with specific plans for a specific project at a specific location, and that makes sure that you're still involved in the process. You can evaluate every proposal that we make. You can look at the details on a case-by-case basis, and you can certainly weigh and evaluate whether there's any potential adverse impacts that need to be mitigated. I want to also point out that particularly for restaurants and cafes that have liquor service, all alcoholic beverage providers here in the state are regulated by the Department of Consumer Protection Liquor Control Division. You must have an actual liquor license to sell liquor here in the state of Connecticut, and they are strictly regulated for liquor law compliance by liquor enforcement agents. So, this text amendment, from our perspective, is really a clarification of the existing regulations, and we see it as supporting the economic viability of small local businesses and promoting tourism-related businesses here in town, which I think is certainly consistent with the POCD. The memo that Ms. Harris, Jett Harris, read into the record from the Planning Commission finds that this text amendment is fully consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We're hopeful that you'll act favorably upon this request so that we can now take the next step, and that's actually preparing some plans, meeting again with Mr. Mahaln, and ultimately hopefully bringing them before you for the snack bar project sometime in the near future. So, I want to thank you for your time and attention tonight. I'll remain available for any questions you might have. I've got both Danielle and Chris here as well. If they have an operational question, I can answer. But if you don't have any other questions, I would reserve the right of rebuttal. Thank you.
Now's the time for the Commission to ask any questions.
Just kind of an observation based on Mr. Mahaln's observations on the regulation of the change, right? As written, this section would eliminate, it's a comment to the proposed regulation that says, "As written, this section would eliminate all the existing alcoholic liquor outlet regulations found in Section 20," right? What's your comment to that?
Yeah, so what it would eliminate are the separation distances. So, in Section 20, if you look at, if you have, I don't know if you have your copy of your regulations before you, but Section 20.20 lays out basically three kinds of separation distances for any kind of alcoholic use. So, the first one is for the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on premise, and that's the 1,500-foot to any other similar type use. And then the next one is a 1,500-foot radius for off-premise. Those are like package stores. And then the third one is the 500 feet to certain types of uses like public schools and libraries and playgrounds and things like that. So, but if you continue, you'll see that Section 20.25, 2026, which includes restaurants, 2027, which is grocery beer, 2020.8, which is for taproom breweries, it makes a notwithstanding argument, says regardless of what's up here, if you do this use at this particular location, those don't apply. So, the separation distances as drafted would not apply to this application or this type of use in the SU zone. There is a parcel of land directly north to Aces High Campground, which is a Catholic church, I believe, and so those two parcels touch, and under the separation distance requirement under 2020.3, you can't have two parcels of land abutting each other. My Section 20.20.9 would at least allow us to submit for a special permit for that. If you went out there, you'd see that there's several hundred feet between the actual church and the outdoor pavilion area, and it's thickly vegetated with a big screened buffer. So, what we're hoping that you'll do is adopt 20.20.9, and remember that it's still subject to special permit. So, when we come in with a particular project at a particular site, you certainly have the right to say, hey, we would like some additional buffering, or this location, we'd like you to shift it to make sure there's proper separation. Right now, you can't see the church through those pine trees there, but they are adjacent parcels, very large parcels of land.
Do you see this café open to just camp guests, or would people from surrounding neighborhoods come in and use it?
Yeah, our intention is to have it just for the camper guests. Sometimes people will actually come and visit the campground, particularly, you know, for example, I have a friend of mine whose brother comes up from Florida and brings his camper, and I think they stay at Aces High, and he'll go over and visit them, so it's a camper guest. But no, this is not a facility that we would have open to the general public. We wouldn't invite people from the general public. That wouldn't be how we would structure it. It would be for camper residents, and that's our target audience. Similar, for example, and I've done these types of projects in other, not this particular use, but Fairview, the Fairview Oddfellows Retirement Community in Groton, I don't know if you're aware, familiar with that. It's right on the Thames River and looks down. There's, you know, several hundred units there. They have a café on premise, which I permitted. It's a café. They have a café liquor license. You wouldn't know it's there unless you lived in that community, but you can go there and you can have a drink, you can have food. They serve meals there, and, you know, people come and visit their parents or their grandparents there. They can go and sit down in the area and have, you know, have a meal and have beverages. I would imagine that the model that we're trying is very similar to that.
As you mentioned, the application applies to any SU zone operation. So, are you applying for general public access to the restaurant and bar, or are you applying for campers only or occupants of the premises only?
Yeah, so the use that's established, first of all, it would apply to the SU zone, but it has to be ancillary to a campground or resort. So, I think the only other one that technically applies is the KOA campground because they're in an SU zone. There's some other uses like AHIPA and some other uses, so that doesn't meet the basic requirement. But as it's written, it's with that complex, and that's certainly how we would intend to operate it. When you have a text amendment before you, you have three choices. You can approve it, you can deny it, and you can approve it with modifications. So, if the Commission was more comfortable saying, well, these restaurants and cafes are for campers only or camper residents only, that's fine. We can live with that. You know, campers and their guests would be ideal for us because we do have families that come and visit, especially people coming up from Florida. So, if that's something that would make you more comfortable, I think we can certainly agree to something like that.
I have a question. When you talked about there are certain conditions as to why that they wouldn't work, one of them you mentioned, one of them I know is playground. How close is this café to the, I'm sure that the campground doesn't have a playground?
It does have a playground on-site, absolutely. It said it has a play area.
Okay, so how close would that be to the proposed text amendment change for the café?
So, again, the-
Because I've never been there before.
Yeah, that's okay. So, if you drive into the area, the fishing pond and the beach and the play area are off to the right, and the camp store is right to the left, and you have your access gates right in front of you, because it is a secure facility for the people to stay there. So, the pavilion is on the other side of the campground, but again, that's another reason why we have Section 20.20.9 in, because that says, hey, if there is a playground on-site and the playground is within 500 feet, that's okay because 20.20.9 says, as long as this restaurant or café is in an approved recreation complex or resort area, those separation distances don't apply. And in fact, that's, I think if you went out there, and again, we're not applying for a specific location right now, but that's exactly the type of reason why you need a Section 20.20.9, because otherwise you'd be shooting yourself in the foot. You wouldn't be able to have a playground, you know, on your site and have a food and beverage facility. That's the purpose of having that, just to prevent a unreasonable restriction on use.
Mr. Mahaln?
Mr. Sweeney, since this is not site-specific, I'll try to stay away from that.
Sure.
So, if you're successful, we can discuss those at another hearing.
Can we, we can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry. I forgot my mic is.
Can you go over the state's definition and Liquor Control Regulations of café?
Sure. So, cafes and restaurants are both what we call on-premise liquor establishments. That means liquor has to be served on-premise. There are, there's an exception after COVID that you can take a corked bottle of wine off the premise, but other than that, you have to drink it on-premise. The difference between a café and a restaurant is primarily, there's a little bit of a time difference. Cafes have to open later than restaurants in the morning. I think they have to open 11. Restaurants can open earlier. But the primary difference is the level of food. So, if you're a restaurant, you have to provide full-course sit-down meals, typically with wait service. So, that is sort of the more traditional restaurant. That's not what we're hoping to do as our first, you know, foray into the food and beverage service. Cafes, you can serve alcohol as well, but you must serve food, and it must be substantial food. It can't be peanuts or potato chips. You have to have sandwiches, soups, and there's an example of that. You can also, in some places, I've seen them actually bring in food with food trucks and stuff, but you have to have the provision of food. In Connecticut, there's no such thing as a bar. I know that's hard to believe, but Connecticut doesn't allow bars. They used to allow taverns, which let you do that. They got rid of that like three years ago and wrapped those into cafes. So, cafes- So cafes must have food, it just doesn't have to be full sit-down meals. And so the type of food we're looking to do with the snack bar, you know, you go up, you order a hamburger, you order a sandwich, maybe a salad, and you would take it and walk over to the pavilion, you might sit with your family and eat it there, or you're with your friends. You might go up and get a couple beers, you know, at eight o'clock at night, sit, you know, sit, have a couple drinks, and then go back to your campsite and sit around the fire. That's the kind of what we're trying to do. So the cafe really works for us, because we want to have that food, but we don't want that sit-down, formal environment at this point. And I think that makes sense at a campground facility.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
Just, I just wanted a clarification. Does, because this is outdoor dining, does this have to be permitted every year?
We haven't got, that's a very good question, and we haven't gotten there yet. That the facility hasn't been discussed, because if it's approved, they'll come back for a special permit, and that would be the question at that time, but it's also a good leading question at this time for future discussion, or perhaps Mr. Sweeney can address that now.
Yeah, I mean, any outdoor dining, and that's what we intend to do here, I talked about a seasonal facility, any outdoor dining would have to meet all your regulations for outdoor dining. So this isn't, I think it's important to realize, particularly the way I wrote it, I didn't want to write this regulation so that we could just go to bill and say, hey, listen, it's now in the regulation, just give us, just sign off on our liquor permit. We want to be able, we thought it was important that we come in and we give you all the details, and we show compliance with all your regulations. But, you know, it costs money to put together plans, it costs money to hire engineers, it costs money to hire attorneys. You know, Danielle and Chris wanted to make sure that this was an acceptable concept before we spend the money on actual design plans for the snack bar. And so that's, we're trying to take it in a sequential step to get to that point.
Follow-up question, if I may. I know we're not supposed to be site-specific, but you used the term pavilion. I'm assuming the existing pavilion has a roof over it?
Yeah, it does.
And our outdoor dining doesn't permit that?
Well, if that's, if that's a concern, then we'll have to establish some additional outdoor dining separate from that.
Okay, thank you.
Does the campground currently, I'm just curious, does campground currently allow residents, campers, to bring their own alcohol?
Yeah, absolutely. But it's unlicensed, it's, it's sort of like bring your own alcohol. They have rules and regulations as well, and, you know, I've been there several times now. I think this is by far the, and I've represented other RV parks. I did the one up at Amos Lake in Preston. This is an extremely, extremely well-operated and managed facility, so the, just the maintenance and the rules and the way it's set up, they have really significant controls, particularly access controls. You can't even get into the, past the camp store without having a code to get through the gate. So I think those are really important things that I think would, when we get to that point, should give some level of comfort to the commission.
He should tell them.
I have a dent in the roof of my Jeep to verify that.
Oh.
It came from the gate at Ace's High.
Sorry about that.
I went there on an invite from the owner.
Terrific. I, well, I'm sorry about the dent in the roof of your car. I hope that doesn't affect your vote tonight.
Oh, gosh.
But again, I just, I would just leave you with this, and I'd just remind you that you have the authority under the statutes to do three things. You can approve it as I presented it, you can deny it as I presented it. I would urge you not to, because I think it's consistent, and I think it's, I tried to make it very modest and measured and give you enough protection. Or you can approve with modifications. So for example, if Mr. Peck said he wanted to add a clause that said, you know, including restaurants and cafes without, with or without the sale of alcoholic liquors and, or alcoholic beverages to camper, campers or resort residents only, that would be fine. We'll work with you on that, and we'll, we'll work with you, and I think that's a reasonable thing if there's a concern about that. I don't really have a concern with my clients on that issue, but if that's something you think that, that needs to be put in there, we'll definitely work with the town on that issue.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in support of this text amendment? Anyone at all? Is there anyone here that wants to speak against it? Anybody neutral? Any more questions from the commission, or do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. I think we have six ayes. Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the application of Paul Garrity Esquire, agent for English Harbor Capital Partners LLC, owner, for a zone change at property located at 237 Upper Patagonic Road, East Lime Assessor Map 39.0 Lot 10 dash 2, as noted by the applicant. And I might ask Mr. Mahalan if he ran the legal ad for this.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We have a memo to read first. This one is from Mr. Mahalan, I believe.
Memo to East Lime Zoning Commission from William Mahalan, zoning official, English Harbor Capital Partners LLC, proposed zone change 237 Upper Patagonic Road, East Lime, October 18, 2023. The applicant is proposing to change the existing zoning designation for the subject property, which is identified in the application, as 237 Upper Patagonic Road, East Lime Assessor's Map 39.0 Lot 10 dash 2, from Affordable Housing District back to the underlying zone RU-40 Residential. Several years ago, the zoning commission granted a zone change for the property to A H D for the purpose of building an affordable housing development. The original zoning district was RU-40. Should the commission approve the application, the property would revert to the RU-40 designation, and the affordable housing approval would be abandoned. The applicant's attorney, Paul Garrity, is present this evening and will give a brief presentation. During the board's deliberations, it should be carefully evaluated, the proposal taking into consideration that an approval would eventually eliminate multifamily development from the underlying RU-40 zone.
And we have a second memo from Deep.
East Lime Zoning Commission care of William Mahalan, zoning official, P O Box Drawer 5199 at Connecticut 06357. Subject, Connecticut Deep L W R D. Comments on proposed zoning amendments to change zone from A H D to RU-40 at 237 Patagonic Road, East Line. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resource Division of the proposed text amendment noted above received by mail on September 20, 2023. After requesting clarification, we understand Lot 10 dash 2 is the only lot proposed to revert back to the RU-40 from the current A H D zone. Acting as a commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text amendments for consistency with the policies and standards of the General Coastal Management Act, Connecticut General Statutes, Sections 22A 90 through 22A dash 112 inclusive, and finds them generally consistent.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead and keep going.
Yeah.
These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in the CGS Section 22A dash 104E, which requires that any zoning regulation or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of CGS Section 22A dash 92 and the criteria of subsection B of Section 22A dash 102 of the C S, C C M A. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the commissioner of the Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposal's consistency with the policies of Section 22A dash 92 and the criteria of Section 22A dash 102B of the C C M A. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this letter or any other coastal management matter, please feel free to contact me via email, marcy.bellant@ct.gov. Sincerely, Marcy Bellant.
Okay, now it's time for the third memo.
October 17, 2023, Anne Thurlow, Chairman, East Lime Zoning Commission, town of East Lime, P O Box 519108, Pennsylvania Avenue, 98 at Connecticut 06357. Zone change, A H D Affordable Housing District to RU-40 Rural Residential at 237 Upper Patagonic Road. Chairman Thurlow, the East Line Planning Commission, at its meeting on October 10, 2023, found the above-referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 East Lime Plan of Conservation and Development. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or the P O C D, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary Gashel II, at 860-691-4105. Sincerely, Kurt Scott, Secretary, Planning Commission.
We have one more memo, and that's from our water and sewer chairman.
October 16, 2023, Anne Thurlow, East Lime Zoning Commission, zoning chairman, chairwoman, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, 98 at Connecticut 06357. Dear Mrs. Thurlow, I reviewed the application of Paul Garrity, for English Harbor Capital Partners LLC, owner, for a zone change at property located at 237 Upper Patagonic Road, East Lime Assessor's Map 39.0 Lot 10 dash 2. As it pertains to the East Line Water and Sewer Commission, the revision of this property back to an RU-40 designation limits the possible negative environmental impacts to a vital local aquifer in the vicinity, as neither water nor sewer infrastructure exist to supporting, to support housing above and beyond that of a single-family development in this area. Sincerely, Kevin Siri, First Selectman, Water and Sewer Chairman.
Thank you, great job. Attorney Garrity, if you'd like to present?
Sure, thank you. Paul Garrity, Gary Benano, New London, on behalf of the applicant, English Harbor Capital Partners. If I might, I have some handouts. Basically, what these are, are three documents. One is the G I S map that indicates the butters, whom you have all provided notice via certified mail, Mr. Mahalan, the original certifications of the mailing.
That's correct.
Second is the current area that is sought under the zone change. And the third map is the original Affordable Housing District zone that shows three phases which was intended to be implemented. The original Affordable Housing application and designation was done by the predecessor entitled, who was a New England national. A number of years ago, English Harbor conveyed 38 of these 44 acres to the East Line Land Trust, subject to a D E E P conservation easement, which is, which would be held in perpetuity, preserving those 38 acres that were conveyed to the land trust. Your Affordable Housing District requires a minimum of 10 acres in order to have an affordable housing. We were left with six acres, six acres after that transfer, so an affordable housing proposal is no longer viable for this particular property. My client has looked at it and believes that converting it back to an RU-40 is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. The planning commission felt the same way and approved that, and we're asking the commission tonight to revert this back to an RU-40, so that there might be some potential development of the property in the future as single-family. Presently, there are no particular plans, as to, still in line from Mr. Sweeney, until we know you're going to do this, we're not going to spend the money for engineering or anything like that in order to determine what, if anything, can be done with the property at that point in time. But it's certainly a significantly less intense proposal for the property in terms of development, eliminates probably a number of concerns from the local residents and also from the planning commission and/or the zoning commission relative to the intensity of development. So I would ask the commission tonight to approve the application to change the zone back to RU-40. And happy to answer any questions the commission members may have.
Does anybody have anything? I think it's a great idea, myself.
Just to be clear, it was RU-40 before.
That's correct, right. And when we proposed it, or I shouldn't say when we, because I was not involved in it, when it was proposed back then, as I said, it was about the 44 acres, and had been approved for affordable housing at that point, under the Affordable Housing District regulations, not under A 30G, so.
Is there anyone from the public here that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone from the public that would like to speak against returning this to RU-40? No one? Okay. If we don't have any other questions on our board, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, 600. Okay, we'll move on to our regular meeting. We need to approve our minutes from the last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read them? Do you need a couple minutes?
I would move approval.
My second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Epstein?
Epstein.
501. Thank you, moving right along. Application of William R. Sweeney, Esquire, agent for Jessman and Frank Paradise LLC, for proposed text amendment to Sections 12.1.1A and 20.20.9 of the East Lime Zoning Regulations. Open for discussion.
I would like to approve this, but since the applicant has no desire either way to include the general public as being customers of this type of facility, I would say, speaking in behalf of the townspeople, I have a feeling they would like to take a couple of baby steps into this. So since they're not applying for the public, why don't we approve it with residents of the facility only?
And their guests?
Sorry, you say residents only or residents and guests?
Yeah.
I would say residents and guests.
I would like, I like residents and guests.
I, I agree with that. I was a, in the interest of full disclosure, I owned a cooperative campsite in Strawberry Park for 30 years, and from my experience, very few people come from the outside. You know, when I was there for a weekend, my family would come and visit me, and there was no restraint on the amount of alcohol we could bring in our cars and consume on The store there, for a period of time, did sell beer, but you had to go up and buy a six-pack, and that was all they sold. And I see no problem with allowing them to sell beer with a meal when you go to their restaurant or snack bar. We had a snack bar, we had a restaurant, we had, I don't know if you're familiar with Strawberry Park. I sold my site in 2020, but I owned two properties there for 30 years. I'm very familiar with it. I, I don't see it as being an issue with the outside coming in. And as I said, that site is secure, because I went at the invite of the owner, the gate so closed so quickly, it came down on the top of my car, and there's still a dent there to this day. So nobody's going in there uninvited.
Any other comments?
I just want to be clear that the alcohol will only be served at the, in the cafe by the pavilion and not in the, not in like a store, like it's not going to become a liquor store there on, on the premises. It's going to be served like with a meal, or they can set up another beer or something like that, wine.
I can't say anything.
No, I think we address that at the special permit, if they come forward with that.
I think because I have to come back for a special permit, I'm, I'm feeling better about voting for this.
Norm, did you make a motion?
No.
Oh, okay. I didn't know whether he did or not.
No, it's, would someone like to make a motion when we're in the room?
I, I'll make a motion to approve with modifications that it's restricted to re- I'll make a motion to approve with modifications that it's restricted to resort residents and their guests.
Do you want to read the entire?
Thank you. On motion to approve, application of William R. Sweeney Esquire Agent for Jasmina and Frank Paradise LLC for proposed text amendment to Sections 12 dot 1 dot 1A and 20 dot 20 dot 9 of the Eastline Zoning Regulations.
With your amendments?
With the modification to restrict it to resort residents and their guests.
Okay.
My second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Past 600.
Madam Chair, one legal ad next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the application of Paul Garrity Esquire Agent for English Harbor Capital Partners LLC owner for a zone change at property located at 237 Upper Patagonic Road, Eastline Assessor's Map 39.0 Lot 10-2, as noted by the applicant. Discussion? No, but I know. I think it's a great thing, so I'm all for it. Anyone else?
I would move approval.
I would speak.
Do we have? Do you want to read the entire motion?
Move to approve the application of Paul Garrity Esquire Agent for English Harbor Capital Partners LLC owner for each zone change to property located at 237 Upper Patagonic Road, Eastline Assessor's Map, as noted by the applicant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Done deal. Next, we'll move on to the application of Robert Lorenzo owner for Coastal Area Management Site Plan Review.
Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting. Effective next Friday, we publish on Thursday.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I always forget to ask that. Application of Robert Lorenzo owner for Coastal Area Management Site Plan Review for a single-family home construction for property located at 12 East Shore Drive, Black Point Beach Club, Nyannick Assessor Map 05 dot 11 Lot 66. We have a memo to read here.
Memo to Eastline Zoning Commission from William Mulholland, zoning official, October 18th, 2023. The applicant, Robert Lorenzo, is applying for a municipal coastal site plan approval to remove an existing house and construct a new dwelling at the above referenced property. In this case, the zoning commission authority and review are limited to the provisions of Section 14 and the state statutes. As the commission is aware, coastal site plan reviews are mandated under the Coastal Management Act as provided for in Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statutes. This regulatory program is designed to protect the state's coastal resources from unsuitable development on lands within the coastal boundary. Local shoreline communities must review specific types of proposed development for compliance with the act. Typically, the construction of a single-family dwelling is exempted from review, provided it is 100 feet or more from a certain coastal resource. In this proposal, the home will sit approximately 32 feet from an existing retaining wall, which functions as a seawall. Immediately adjacent to the wall and seaward is an additional erosion structure consisting of a large construction of boulders which function as another seawall. A review of the application finds the only coastal resource on site is existing rocky shore front and a minor beach area depending on the tides. Given this shorefront is already developed, there will be no adverse impacts from the proposed project on coastal resources. The applicant is here and will give a brief presentation.
I'm Dave Coonrod, the surveyor who represents the client, Bob. Brief history, there was a house on this lot originally. When Bob bought it, it has been removed, I think in 2019, we took it down, while Bob decided what he was going to do with the lot. In the meantime, after several discussions, he decided to build a new house in the same location as the old house, which is outside the flood zone, as per all the FEMA maps. We're doing the same thing, building a new house outside the FEMA zone, pretty close to the original location. As Bill says, we put silt fences up, our silt barrier to protect any grating, any erosion into the bay. The grading is going to match what was there now. We're not changing any of the grading on the lot, it's going to stay the same, just the way it is. There was an existing garage on the house, it's staying there. There was a driveway already there, we're keeping that driveway. We've already constructed a construction pad to go in and out of the lot, so it wouldn't affect the old driveway, which is small peat stones, and we didn't want to tear that one up. And basically, that's what we're going to do, it's a new construction. And we follow under the Black Point Zoning Regulations, which adhere to our, which we're adhering to, and we have to go by their guidelines on certain parts of the regulation.
Sir, thank, yes, Mr. Mulholland?
Dave, in your application, you've identified under coastal resources, you know?
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Got to get a nice long record. In the identify of, identification of coastal resources, you have identified that general coastal resources as on-site, beaches and dunes on-site, and developed shorefront as well as rocky shorefront. Is that correct? And you identified those based on, on the CAM handbook, is that correct?
Yes.
And then moving along, you've identified the coastal use and activity policies and standards. You've noted general development, which I would agree with. This goes on to describe some other things, such as water-dependent uses, ports, harbors, coastal structures and filling, dredging and navigation, boating, fisheries, coastal recreation and access, sewer and water lines, fuel and chemical and hazards, materials, transportation, solid waste, dams, dikes and reservoirs, cultural resources and open space and agricultural lands. Technically, only the general development does apply. I agree with Dave, and I just wanted to run through that and note that for the record. And you were looking, Dave, at identifying in your application any potential adverse impacts, and you have on the several categories noted not applicable. It doesn't degrade tidal wetlands, beaches or dunes based on the proposed activity. It doesn't increase the hazard of coastal flooding, doesn't degrade existing circulation patterns of coastal water, doesn't degrade natural existing drainage patterns or degrade natural erosion patterns or degrade visual quality through significant alteration of the natural features of visitors. Few points, and obviously, it was a developed site to be redeveloped, doesn't degrade water quality through significant introduction into the either coastal waters or groundwater supplies of suspended soils, nutrients, tax, toxics, heavy metals or pathogens, pathogen, pathogens. Somebody get that out for me tonight, please. Can't get that one on as much as I'm going to try. And it doesn't degrade or destroy essential wildlife. So essentially, it's your conclusion that there will be no adverse impacts on coastal resources from the proposed activities? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have nothing further.
Any other comments or questions from Mr. Coonrod?
Is this served by public sewer and water or?
It's public sewer and water.
I think it's pretty much business as usual. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of Robert Lorenzo owner for a coastal area management site plan review for a single-family home construction for property located at 12 East Shore Drive, Black, what is that, Black?
Oh, Black Point.
It doesn't say, well, it just says BPBC, Nyannick, Connecticut.
Black Point Beach Club Association, is that what that is?
Is it Black Point Beach Club?
Yeah.
Okay, is that what that means?
Yeah.
Black Point, Black Point Beach Club, Nyannick Assessor's Map 05 point 11 Lot 66.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Don't have any old business. Moving on to new business for next time, we have the application of Christopher Herbert for Constantines on the Bay for special permit for outdoor dining for property located at 252-2 Main Street, Nyannick Assessor's Map 12.1 Lot 115. And we also have coming up the application of Michael Frisbee for Noble Eastline LLC for special permit for additional signage for property located at 51 Boston Post Road, Nyannick Assessor Map 36.0 Lot 61. Any business on the floor tonight that's, anyone wants to bring up?
I just have a question, Mr. Mulholland. Did you hear back yet from the Stop and Shop with the?
Actually, I did an attorney, Sweeney was here this evening, and he had asked that if he could address that, and he's going to be here in a November meeting. He has a personal matter which he wanted to leave as soon as he could this evening. So I talked to the chairwoman about that, and we agreed that we thought we could hold off until that time.
Attorney, he's coming November 16.
Okay, thank you.
Zoning, Mr. Mulholland?
So we covered Stop and Shop. I'll just add that Cafe Soul is coming along. I inspected it the other day. They seem to be at about 70% finished inside. They've just painted the exterior of the building, it's coming together nicely, so I understand, I think they're going to be open early November, mid-November. They're working very hard, it's coming along. The Main Street gas station remodel, if you haven't noticed, is essentially completed, put new roof, painted the exterior with new windows. All that's left is a refresh of some of the landscaping. The Main Street Grill is now going to become Constantine, so they hope to be open early November, year-round, starting, I think, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and growing as the public comes in and starts to frequent the place. Hopefully, that'll be successful. Williams has changed hands, it'll be have a new name and it has a new operator, so that's all very exciting and has occurred down on Main Street, so Nyannick continues to move along.
And I, beforehand, they had a ladies' night on Main Street. Anyway, there was a buzz in the air, everybody was so excited about the improvements down there, and really excited about Cafe Soul opening up and having a parking lot and being expanded and all the other changes.
It, they've done a nice job, and it was a very tough interior remodel. I was somewhat impressed. The floors apparently were pretty wavy, and they've had to straighten floors and move walls, and electrical's difficult, you know, refitting an old, old house, so, and they're moving awfully quickly.
And when do you think?
They're doing a nice job.
The car wash is looking awesome as well.
Car wash is coming together, they're trying to, they're trying to move along on the site plan to pave before the plants close and get open. I think they're about a month behind because of all the rain.
Yeah. Our ex officio, do you have any comments for us?
At the last meeting, I reported on the business that we had been undertaking. I mentioned the charter revision commission, and the, the charges have been drawn up, the questions at the polls. You'll be able to vote on each question individually, yes or no, and this will be at the same time as the regular election. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the items. However, the Board of Selectmen are prohibited from taking a position publicly on any of the issues. I hope that you feel that our referendum on the land use and the properties, I hope you're happy that that passed. I wish that there had been a bigger public turnout, but actually, even though the, I've forgotten the exact percentage, but it was actually more people turned out for that than for our previous referendum. So I think that's, I think that's good news, and it was overwhelming. This, however, does not mean that the deal is closed. We only have authority from the townspeople to spend up to a certain amount of money, which was on the ballot question. We still have to go back and negotiate further with the dealers, with the owners, and if they decide that, based on our previous discussions, that they are not satisfied with that, then we have a price limit, and we can't go above that. The voters voted to spend a certain amount of money, and that's what we have to work with. So I'm happy to answer any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
See you around town.
And then, Mr. Peck, you mentioned you might go to the last planning meeting?
Madam Chair, before you start, just one last thing. I just want to let the commission know that we have hired another full-time admin downstairs, and she will start on Monday, so hopefully it helps relieve Jess of having been overworked during the job of two people, and she's done a great job, so.
She's done a fabulous job.
Yes, thank you, Jess, because.
You have.
And we think the new candidate.
Absolutely.
We think the new candidate will be equally as skilled as Jess is, so hopefully it'll help move forward, so will help this board as we move forward as well. So I'll just share that with you.
Great news. Thank you. Mr. Peck, do you have a planning report?
Yes. Other than the two referrals we gave the planning board for the ACE's High proposal and the change of zone, I discussed those, of course. They were okay with both of them, as you know. They had a discussion at length about a three-lot subdivision off of Scott Road. No issues according to Bill Mulholland. It's an extension of a previously approved subdivision, and that was tabled for another night. Only other item. Again, they discussed the request to refer to the Board of Selectmen to add ordinance that applies taxes and fees to to land, to a land use permit.
I think regarding.
That was.
I thought it was regarding, I spoke to Gary briefly, informed me, I thought he had stated that it was about tax and fees for subdivisions and trying to enhance their subdivision regs. Does that sound familiar?
I brought it up last time, when I, after I went to the planning board, and it was, Roseanne, do you recall this proposal? My notes here are unclear.
I don't know, you have to speak up.
Oh, I know, I know. All taxes and fees due to the town must be made current prior to any approval.
That's right.
Yes, that's correct. I know additional business until all the past taxes are paid.
Yep, and that was it.
Okay, thank you so much for attending.
Yep.
We have Mr. Schmidt down for the November 21st meeting?
Okay, if you say so.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any correspondence this week. We do have hearings coming up December 7th on two text amendments, the design review for the Flanders End of Town, and also revisions on the landscaping. And for anybody interested, next Monday night here is the next meeting on short-term rentals at 7:00. That's all I have. Anybody else?
I'm ready for your turn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for a great meeting. Thank you.